Well, good evening, everyone. It is time for us to begin our second public hearing for this budget season. We're pleased to welcome all of you here and look forward to your comments. I might remind everyone that this is a hearing. This is not a meeting where we will make a decision or enter into lots of intense debate, but we are eager to hear your comments. And if there are questions from commissioners, well, of course, we will allow for that. But with that introduction, and once again, welcome you all here, but I will call this special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order Monday, July 31, 2017. Madam Clerk, first item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Ransah?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Chairman Unruh?
Present.
And next item?
New business. Item A, Public Hearing Regarding the 2018 Sedgwick County Budget.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, public citizens of Sedgwick County. This evening is the final hearing, public hearing, on the 2018 budget. This is Sedgwick County's recommended operating budget with totals of $407,276,187. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $137,441,377, which is approximately equivalent to 29.359 mils based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. I recommend you open the public hearing, receive comments, and close the hearing once it is over. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And before we ask for first speaker, Commissioners, are any question or comment that she would like to make before we begin the public hearing? I see no one wishing to speak, so at this point, I will open the public hearing, and we have a list of those who have signed up. And we'll ask you to step to the podium and give us your name, and then you will have three minutes to make your comments. We try to stay to three minutes. You know, we're not going to be real strict about that, but if you could hold them to three minutes, that'd be great. And the first person who signed up was Justin Givens.
Thank you to the Board of County Commissioners. I come today in support of increased funding for the Department of Aging Senior Centers Grants. I have with me tonight Pamela Riggs, who is our Senior Center Director. In this limited time, I think the best approach I have is to read a letter of support that was adopted at the July 25, 2017, meeting by the Clearwater Governing Body. Gentlemen, this letter is being written in support of additional funding for the Clearwater Senior Center. It is our understanding that the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging requested that an additional $73,000 be included in the budget for 2018. That request was, however, not included in the original submission to you for mil-level funding for the Department on Aging. The governing body of the City of Clearwater now respectfully requests that those monies be considered and included in the appropriation for the Department of Aging for 2018. For more than a decade, the City of Clearwater has had in place a funding agreement with Sedgwick County Department on Aging and is thankful for the money that it has received during that time. As part of the program, the Clearwater Senior Center has been able to provide services to not only Clearwater residents, but to residents in Viola, Peck, and the unincorporated areas of Sedgwick County surrounding our community. As part of that agreement, the center is required to provide and measure specific numbers of events, programs, and outcomes. During the last six years, the Clearwater Senior Center has operated at a level sufficient to receive additional funding from the county. However, that funding has never materialized. This year, we were extremely grateful that the Advisory Council on Aging visited our center and reviewed our operation. We were even more grateful when they made the recommendation for increased funding for our center. That funding request, $17,000, would be extremely useful in the ongoing operations of projects and programs for our senior center and in serving the needs of the residents of Sedgwick County. While the $17,000 only represents a small fraction of the overall county budget, these funds would help to increase the budget of the Clearwater Community Center by 24 percent. To date, the Clearwater Senior Center has seen 3,377 people participate in 56 baseline educational and special events programs. For comparison, in all of 2016, 3,951 people participated in 66 similar events. Again, the governing body and citizens of our town are extremely grateful for the past relationship with the county and Department of Aging, but would like to request formally that the funding recommended by the Aging Advisory Council be included in the 2018 Sedgwick County budget. And this letter is signed by Bert Esserim, the Mayor, Laura Papish, Council President, Ron Marsh, Council Member, Tex Titterington, Council Member, Paul Clark, Council Member, and Chris Griffin, Council Member. And I have copies of the letter if you would like.
Yes, please. If you want to hand them to the Clerk, we'll have them for our record. Appreciate your comments. We do have a comment from Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank you, Justin, Mr. Givens, for coming out tonight and giving us that message, and I appreciated the email that I also received last week. So, thank you for everything you do, all my friends down in Clearwater, and thank you for the service that you provide.
Thank you. And I don't know if I stated at the start, but I'm Justin Givens with the City Administrator for the City of Clearwater.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
I don't see anyone else asking to speak. Ms. Riggs, did you want to add, or was that your letter?
That's not my letter.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Gary O'Neil.
Chairman Unruh, Commissioners, staff, my name is Gary O'Neil. I live at 4967 North Hillcrest in Bel Air. I'm here this evening as a citizen and a senior citizen, a proud senior citizen of Bel Air. I had the fortunate duties to be able to serve on the City Council of Bel Air and also three terms of Bel Air back in the late '90s and early 2000s. I also was fortunate enough to serve three and a half years as the Sedgwick County Association of Cities as a chairman of that. And I know what the senior center means to Bel Air. We started the senior center. We increased it from a club level when I was mayor to a senior center level. And I know what the small cities' senior centers mean to them. Hayesville, Mulvane, and Clearwater, as well as Bel Air, has worked extremely hard at the behest not only of the citizens, but of the Sedgwick County Department of Aging, to increase our services to our seniors. And our center has done that, as well as has the other three cities here tonight. We've done just what the Department of Aging asked us to do, provide more services to our seniors, and we have done that, but we haven't seen increased funding. And it's my understanding, visiting with our senior director, that she was told by one of the staff people that they had been approved for increased funding. Now, whether that was semantics, maybe it should have said recommended for increased funding rather than approved for, but it was our belief that we had been approved for additional funding, also in the $17,000, $18,000 range. I guess I'm going to ask this evening Commissioner O'Donnell, who has Hayesville and Clearwater in your district, Commissioner Unruh has Bel Air in his district, and also Commissioner Howell, who has Mulvane in his district, to consider seriously the senior -- they've worked so hard, these centers have, to increase the services level. We've been asked to do that. Our citizens want these levels, and we do that, but yet there's no funding. So, it almost reminds me of mandates that come down from the federal and state government to the county and other cities where they tell you what you need to do as a mandate, but they don't provide any funding for you to do that with. So, I think that's something I'd like to see the Commissioners take up, is to provide the increased funding to these cities. Being a retired guy, I must say, I didn't show up in a tie tonight. I don't put on ties except for when I go to a funeral, so I hope this doesn't seem like a funeral up here tonight. But I didn't wear a tie tonight. In the paper today, I got the Bel Air Breeze, and quickly, I'm going to read quoting the Bel Air Breeze. It says, "2016 population figures came in on July 1st for Bel Air and had another impressive year of growth. We added 151 residents in 2015 and added another 226 in 2016, bringing the city's population as of July 1st to 7,661. That's a 3 percent growth, and according to the paper, it says, 'Bel Air in the last two years has easily added more residents than Valley Center, Park City, and Ketchikan combined.' We are seeing increased services, and our senior director is here this evening, and she has all of the information. But with the boomers retiring, and great numbers, of which I was the first of the age of the boomers to retire, I take great pride in going to our senior center and having services provided. We have the VA comes there. We have a lot of people come there, and I take advantage of those opportunities. And they've helped us also with signing up for our Medicare programs each year. They've done a great job with that, and I appreciate it very much. I'm not the most computer literate person in the world, want to do some of that." But I would just say, when you look at a $407 million budget, and you're talking about $73,000 split up amongst four cities, according to my calculator, that is .00017936 percent of a percent of your budget. That is not very much money, but it is a lot of money to these four cities and their senior centers. And the last thing, in closing, I would say, I would ask you to review these things. I hope this isn't a closed issue, and we can get some funding this year for the senior centers in these four cities. And I feel sure that there are crafty politicians out here that come the next election cycle will probably be looking for increased funding for senior centers in other cities and potentially Derby and other cities as well. So, thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone wishing to speak, but Bel Air has somewhat of a unique situation where you actually, with your funding from the county, are supporting two senior clubs. Is that correct?
That is correct. Senior Club and Senior Center, both, yes.
And, but this is all in Bel Air. It's no longer hooked up with Ketchikan or Park City?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Our next speaker is Jim Burgess.
My name is Jim Burgess. I'm here to talk about senior centers in Sedgwick County. By way of disclosure, you need to know that I serve as a volunteer on the Advisory Board of the Derby Senior Center and on the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging. I am here as a concerned citizen and not in any official capacity. The Sedgwick County Commission established criteria several years ago whereby senior centers in the county should receive additional funding as certain criteria were met and maintained. Four senior centers in Sedgwick County have met and maintained that criteria for funding improvement for several years, but have never been upgraded. The reason given has always been that there is no funding available. The four senior centers who have met the criteria for increased funding are the Bel Air Senior Center, who you just heard from, the Clearwater Senior Center, who you just heard from, the Mulvane Senior Center, who you'll hear from shortly, and the Hayesville Senior Center, who you will hear from shortly. The cost to fund this upgrade is $73,000. You just heard from the previous gentleman what percentage of the budget that is. A supplemental budget request was submitted by the Advisory Council on Aging through the Department of Aging to fund the $73,000. That request was not included in the final budget submitted in a request for mil levy funds. We are consistently told that no funds are available. This is simply not a true statement. Funds are always available when they're made available by a majority of the Sedgwick County Commissioners. You are the ones that hold the key to the kingdom. You have the right and responsibility to levy those mil -- or to allocate those mil levy funds. The $73,000 represents very little to the overall budget of the Sedgwick County. It's approximately the value of one county employee or one sheriff's cruiser in its operation for one year, or about the cost of one toilet for Sedgwick County Park that you currently have in your budget. The funding is a benefit that would assist 67,000 senior citizens in Sedgwick County over the age of 65 to stay out of nursing homes, to stay out of assisted living homes, to have a place where they can stay active and engaged and stay on the taxpayer rolls. This should be worth the value of one toilet at Sedgwick County Park. I have been in most of the senior centers that are asking for additional funding, as well as many others. I can assure you that the citizens of Sedgwick County are getting more than their full value from the funds currently allocated, and they could do greatly more with the additional funds. For the last several years, funding for senior citizens of Sedgwick County has been dropping, while the number of senior citizens has been increased substantially. Note that the aging mil levy is allowed to assess up to one mil. The current level of funding for the aging mil levy is less than one-half of one mil. I strongly urge you to reconsider this need and to fund the $73,000 for senior centers that serve the growing population of seniors over the age of 65 in Sedgwick County. Remember that you are the ones to set the requirements for the funding level. Honor your own requirements and fund them. Remember that you have the right and responsibility to allocate mil levy funds. Allocate the $73,000. You can help meet the needs of 67,000 senior citizens in Sedgwick County if you choose. Fund the $73,000. You can do it, and you know that it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Very well said. We have a comment here from Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to number one, I say thank you for your testimony this evening. I know that Mr. Burgess is extremely involved in the elderly issues. He's a very strong advocate for senior centers. He's been doing that for as long as I've known him. But I was just wondering if you, maybe off the top of your head, I'm going to ask you some questions, and I didn't give you any advanced notice I would ask you any questions, so I don't know if you can do this. How long have you been advocating for more funding? You told me, when I talked with you in the past, that you've asked year after year after year.
The information I got from the Department of Aging is at least for six or seven years. Now, interestingly enough, about six years ago, Derby did get additional funding, but it was at the cost of another senior center that lost that funding, because Derby's at the maximum level of funding at the present time. But there has been no basic low increase. If you get the history, the funding has been going down. The population has been going up.
Right. So, I guess in my mind, the number of seniors that are using the senior centers is going up, and the cost of the economy is going up as well. And the dollars seem the same, so in a sense, it's kind of like you've got, almost like you have less dollars, so to speak, to do the same kind of work.
That's correct.
Even if you have more people and higher costs, it's just kind of converging lines. That's the kind of way I see it. So, I was looking for my formula sheet. Now, there's a formula sheet that the county put out years ago that talks about performance measures. I don't have that in front of me. I've tried to look it up, and I'm not able to find it quickly, but I guess I would just want to reflect, you know, there's a number of ways of doing this. I think the $73,000 would be something I would be interested in talking about, but to the extent that we can't do that, I mean, consumer price index, otherwise inflation would be another discussion, or growth in the economy. We have property tax. Assessed valuations did go up this last year. That'd be another way to take a look at this.
That would be something, obviously, that we could do, but, you know, at the present time, there has been no increase. I mean, I don't have it with me, but I could submit it to you that the budget has been decreasing for senior citizens overall, not just the senior centers, for at least six or seven years.
And I don't know where I put it here, but I also had a note, I guess, what the senior population's expected to do over the next 20 years, from 2010 to 2030.
It's proposed for an over 10 percent increase.
Right. So, it's continuing to go up. I'll continue thinking about this, but thank you for your comments this evening. And again, I know that you serve on the Derby Senior Center. I want to say thank you for your service there. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see no one else asking to speak. I think that, just for clarification, when all the citizens have had an opportunity to speak, I might ask Tim Kaufman to just give us an overview of all the funding that is provided in our, out of our senior mil levy and all the programs we have in our senior department, so, our aging department, I'm sorry. But we'll go ahead with those who signed up. Next is Jerry Myers.
Jerry Myers, Mulvane Senior Center, 6722 East, 103rd Street South, Mulvane, Kansas. Don't you love that? Took me a while to get used to that. I have held senior center level two for eight years. I have asked funding for eight years to move up. Right now, I'm at senior level one. And I think the differences were, and I wish I would have thought to bring that, when you're a senior center level two, that means you have to have 40 speakers attend your senior center and talk about things that are important to senior centers. And you have to have a matter-of-balance class. You have to, let's see, what else am I trying to say? That you have to do a caregiving class, okay? So, those 40 speakers, now think about a year. That's a long time. That's many people. So, for eight years, I've tried to move to a senior center level two, which would give me the $35,000 instead of the $18,000, which I now receive. The extra funds would give me an opportunity to get new computers, and, which I badly need. Also, I'm located in an old junior high school, so that means that we are in the cafeteria. We've painted it. We've decorated it. We've tried to make it look not like a school cafeteria. And the Mulvane Recreation Commission rents my room out, and many people walk through my center. So, I have an opportunity to kind of have free advertising. If somebody's having a birthday party and grandma comes, then grandma can see my menus and grandma can see my calendar, which is out there, and I get kind of a little bit of free advertising. But also, since I'm in that old school, I have tables that don't match, and if I'm going to put my best foot forward, I would like to have new tables that actually match and make my center look nicer and more welcoming. Plus, there's a great need in Mulvane for a vehicle at my center to transport seniors to doctor's offices, grocery stores, hair appointments, and so on. I've already looked into this because Mr. Hickson said I could, and we thought we found one, but it didn't measure up to our standards. It was not a good thing to do. Okay. So, as you know, Mulvane is located in two counties, so I get twice the meetings to go to, Sumner County, Sedgwick County. And Sedgwick County Transportation decided last year not to transport my Sumner County residents to Wichita. So, we scurried around, and we've had volunteers who will take people. Wellington is, they had a transportation, but by the time they drove from Wellington to Mulvane and then wanted to take somebody to Wichita, that did not work out, and the price was exorbitant. So, if I had a vehicle that I could hire a driver and have transportation for my seniors, that would be wonderful. Also, the next generation, the boomers, which we've all talked about, don't always come to a center on a daily basis. So, they do like to do trips, and they do like to do the extra stuff that we do. So, more funding would be getting those boomers to come down to my center. They like the parties that I do, and I do charge people for extra special luau's or beach parties or whatever for the event. But it doesn't always cover the cost of the expense that I have. Seniors are our most valuable asset in any community. They are always well-informed. They are the ones that get out and vote. They pay their bills on time, and they're wonderful people. They have the voice of experience. They are the backbone of our community. You can't have a future without the past. Keeping seniors in their homes and remaining independent is my main goal at the Mulvane Senior Center. And with the extra funds, I can make that happen. As one of my participants said, "Growing old is not for sissies. We need all the help we can get." And that's what we provide. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, thank you for your comments. I don't see anyone wishing to speak, but I'd have a question for you, though. Do you receive any funding from Sumner County?
I do receive $3,000 for the whole year.
All right. So, they are participating?
They do participate. Sumner County is kind of a poor little county.
Okay. Well, I don't see anyone else asking questions, so thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Benitez.
My name is Jenny Benitez. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for letting me come out. I am the Senior Center Director for the City of Bel Air, and I just wanted to come to just give a little bit of information about our center and why we have been requesting more funding. This is the third year that the Bel Air Senior Center has requested an increase in funding through the Aging Mil Levy Grant. We are a senior center level one, but we have been working at a senior center level two capacity for five years. We currently offer 15 ongoing programs, weekly, monthly. We have over 150 members, and that's growing. Like Gary mentioned, we are getting new people in every day. It seems like every week, I'm signing up a new member or getting calls or phone calls about services. We also offer a variety of educational programs. Like Jerry mentioned, we have to have at least 40, and I know that we hit that and go past it every year. We do special events. We do trips. The special events and the trips are expensive. I do charge a little bit, but again, it's not enough to usually cover the whole cost. And we not only serve the residents of Bel Air, we invite anybody over the age of 55 to our center, so we get people from Ketchikan, Park City, Valley Center, Newton, Wichita, Coalwich. I mean, we get, it just depends on the program that they're coming out for. Our current contract for the mil levy funding only requires the availability of a part-time director. Thankfully, the City of Bel Air was able to find a full-time position for me, splitting my duties between being a part-time senior center director, and then I also do admin for the city. But it's becoming very clear that our senior center, if it's going to continue to grow, needs a full-time senior center director that can focus on the senior center and keep it to where the momentum is still going. We're gaining momentum every year, and I see great things in the future for the Bel Air Senior Center. I would love to get a van to make access to things in Wichita a lot easier. I would love to have eventually our own community center, which would be fantastic. But right now, I'm just asking for funding, just so we can have somebody that is there and giving it the care that it needs. And I've been there for five years. I love what I do, but I've gotten to the point where the funding is not there, and I feel like I can't continue stepping up my game, unfortunately. So, that's about it.
All right. Thank you, and we hope you get to step up your game real soon. But a couple of points of clarification. Some of the towns you mentioned that visit your club, Ketchikan and Coalwich, they do not have senior clubs that receive county funding. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, do they have active clubs that they maintain on their own?
They do. It's, I know with Ketchikan, they have a club, but very minimum programs, and then they are, they have the ability to use the Ketchikan City Hall. But as far as funding, they fund everything themselves through their own donations.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation. And one other question. You mentioned having your own senior facility, but the facilities in City Hall are pretty nice.
They are. The, I guess the reason that that came about is I have wanted to get pickleball started. It's a really, it's becoming a really popular activity among the active seniors. And with our recreation center and their, I guess their schedule, it wasn't, we weren't able to do it. And then we have our community room, but it's not big enough. So, it was just one of those things where I was thinking that if we had our own facility, that I could just do so many things as far as doing physical activities or having a computer lab. It's, you know, out in the future. It, it, you know, out in the future, but that's where I'm looking.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate you being here. I see no more questions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Kevin Arnell.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Kevin Arnell. I'm here as the President of the Board of Trustees at the Sedgwick County Zoological Society, and it sounds like I'm going to break with the theme here just a little bit. But on behalf of the zoo, I, I just wanted to address a couple of topics very quickly with, with you Commissioners. Uh, the, the first thing is, I just wanted to say thank you. Uh, it's been a great year. We have appreciated your collaboration, uh, the, the last year, and, um, you know, it's been a great partnership between the society and, and the county, and it's one that I, I believe is really critical to our community. I think that was demonstrated last year as Mr. Mark Reed transitioned and retired, who'd been a wonderful asset for our community and the zoo. But the commission's, uh, participation in selecting the new Executive Director, Dr. Jeff Etling, who's off to a great start, uh, was, was very significant to us, and, and that, uh, further, uh, your assistance in that transition process was, was really key. And, uh, the society asked me to particularly note that, that Manager Scholes and Assistant Manager Kaufman's participation in this transition has, has just been incredible, so we, we appreciate, um, the resources there. Of course, we, uh, likewise appreciate your consideration of the funding agreement. We're glad to have, have that worked out, and as we're approaching our fiftieth anniversary here in a couple of years, we think that puts us in a great position to be, um, you know, continuing that partnership and, and looking down the road. So, on the, the first topic, again, we just wanted to say thanks for your consideration, and, uh, we understand you have a tough job balancing the, the county's checkbook and trying to assess the needs of the community, and we, um, appreciate your consideration of the value that the, the zoo brings to our community as hopefully one of its real, real crown jewels. Uh, the second thing, I just wanted to provide you with a, a very quick update on a couple of key facts and figures, if you will, about the zoo and our work last year. Uh, we had, with the opening of the new elephant exhibit, over seven hundred, ten thousand visitors through the doors, um, seventy-five thousand folks, school kids, adults that participate in our programs, outreach programs, education programs. We, um, have over eight hundred volunteers this year that we expect to contribute about thirty-four thousand hours of service, three hundred employees, and, uh, even though that sounds like a lot, and it is, um, those volunteers really help us operate on a lean basis, and the board keeps a, a very close eye on our benchmarking and making sure we're doing the best we can with, with what we have and being good stewards. Um, the, the economic impact is estimated on Sedgwick County of about forty-three million dollars, so it's a significant, uh, quality of life issue as well as a significant economic issue for us here in, in the county. So I'd just wind up by saying, uh, again, thank you. Uh, we look forward to continued collaboration and partnership with you all, and, and appreciate it. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Well, Kevin, thank you very much. Those are, those are great comments, um, and we, we also value and appreciate the partnership with the Sedgwick County Zoological Society. Um, you all were stuck with us through a time of, of, um, a lot of discussion about funding agreements, and you all stuck, stayed the course, and, um, we appreciate that. And, uh, we're also proud of our new zoo director and, and look for good things in the future. And of course, you know, there's been a lot of talk about that elephant exhibit, so we, we like to talk about it also. We're also proud of it. But the zoo is clearly a huge asset for Sedgwick County, and, um, we're, we're very pleased that we have a good group of citizens who, who comprise the Zoological Society, who help manage that whole system for us, and, um, it's been a great partnership, and, um, we're as proud of them as you said they were of us. So it's a, it's a mutual admiration society here, but thank you. Thank you for your comments. Have a comment from Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here today. I appreciate it very much. We all value the zoo greatly. Uh, I know your time was running out, but I, I, I think you probably wanted to talk about Zooblee a little bit, but you ran out of time, so I, I just wanted to give you a chance to mention that we've got Zooblee, one of the major fundraisers coming up.
And as Commissioner Dennis noted, uh, Zooblee's coming up September ninth, and it is the big fundraiser for the zoo and, and this community, and we put those, those proceeds to work, um, every day at the zoo, so thank you.
Was that a setup?
Uh, no, but it, but it's, uh, but it worked great, and we hope to see you all there, by the way.
Great, well, we're looking forward to it. But, uh, Commissioners, any other comment or question? Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Kim Landers.
Hello, I'm Kim Landers, and I am the Director of the Hayesville Senior Center. I've served there for the past eleven years as a Director, and it is a responsibility that I take very seriously. I do everything in my power to ensure that the programs that we offer are interesting, educational, but most important, fun. Like many social service agencies these days, I'm limited with the number of programs that I am able to offer. This is why I stand before you tonight. I'm asking for additional funding for those cities in Sedgwick County that work tirelessly to make their senior centers a focal point of the community. Right now, we serve seventy meals on the Meals on Wheels program. Those are seventy meals that we take out into the community. That doesn't include the twenty or twenty-five that we serve at our center. That is one of the things that we have volunteers that step up, but people don't realize that these people delivering the meals are volunteers. So it's the face of the Hayesville Senior Center that they see making these deliveries every day. Right now, Hayesville is currently classified as a Senior Center Number Two. In each of the past three budget years, we have requested to move up to a multi-purpose Senior Center. Um, however, we have not been reclassified at this point. Um, we have met the higher programming needs in each of the three different areas of focus. Our membership has increased eighty-three percent from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and sixteen. We currently have three hundred and fifty-nine members. These members are from not only Hayesville, from Derby, from Mulvane, and from Wichita. We have increased the number of activities that we offer to keep seniors engaged and enthusiastic about attending our center. Research has shown that people who have a reason to remain active and participate in activities with their peers live longer. We strive to be a value to our community, and we participate in many citywide activities, such as Trick or Treat Street, the citywide garage sale where we throw in a bake sale, stuff like that. We partner with the School District for Community Service Projects. We hold a supply drive every year for the students of USG two-six-one, and we adopt a family in need every year at Christmas. We attend several programs in Wichita and beyond. We go to a mystery lunch at a new restaurant, a night out at Mosley Street Melodrama, a monthly trip to the movies. We had a recent activity where we took our grandkids to Watson Park for mini golf and a picnic. And most recently, we rented a bus and we traveled to Oklahoma to visit a town that is being revitalized. We visited their museum, their cathedral, and we had lunch. The Hayesville Senior Center also coordinates helpful programs for members in our community. We assist seniors with Medicare choices, and this last year, we saved our seniors over thirty-two thousand dollars in their projected prescription costs and their drug plans. We have AARP volunteers who served a hundred and thirty-four people this past year with their taxes. Again, we are asking to be promoted to a multi-purpose Senior Center, which would include an additional funding of twenty-two thousand dollars for the year. This increase would allow our center to be open longer hours to serve those people who are still working and are unable to attend the programs we offer during the day. An increase would also make funds available for more frequent travel outside of the Hayesville community. All of these experiences help increase the quality of life that our seniors deserve and that we ourselves hope to enjoy in the golden years. Please give consideration to our requests as you make your budget decisions.
All right, thank you. We have, um, a comment from Commissioner O'Donnell.
I just want to thank you for coming tonight, Ms. Landers. I know that, uh, you and, uh, your whole team of volunteers do a stupendous job down in Hayesville, and, uh, you've had exponential growth, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, for your work.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment? I see none, so thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, there's no one else who signed up to speak, but is there another citizen who wants to speak at this time or did not sign up on any issue relating to the budget? Okay, I don't see anyone rising to speak, so, um, I'll ask Mr. Kaufman if he would, um, step to the podium, and, um, Mr. Kaufman's an Assistant County Manager for Health and Human Services Issues, and I just would like to have him explain a little bit what all of our, uh, aging funding goes for and provides.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, I appreciate the opportunity to kind of give you an overview of the funding for the Department or the Division on Aging in the current budget. We've got, uh, a, a recommended budget of one point one mil-, or ten point one million dollars. Of that is, it's split between local funding, three million dollars, and grant funding of seven point one million dollars. So about twenty-nine point four-five percent of the funding for the Division on Aging is local funding. That, the, the overall funding is divided into five different categories. Um, the, the senior centers fall into the category of community-based services, which overall is about three point eight million dollars, or thirty-seven percent of that overall funding. Within the community-based services budget, we have three different, um, funding programs. We've got community-based services, we've got this, at seventeen percent, we've got senior centers at about sixteen percent, and then community service grants is about sixty-six percent. And that funding goes to a number of different organizations that we, we purchase services from a number of different, uh, organizations in the community. And, um, an example of those services, this is not an exhaustive list, but it is an extensive list. We purchase nutritional, we have, we fund a number of different nutritional programs, congregate meals, Meals on Wheels, roving pantry, and, um, uh, so that's an example. One of the things that we, we do with that additional community services funding, we fund adult daycare services, we fund adult programming services. There's a senior employment program that is funded with these, um, community-based service funds. There's a legal services program for seniors. We provide case management services for seniors. We have an Alzheimer's respite program that we fund for seniors, and there are medication programs for low-income seniors that are also funded with money that comes out of that, that community service pot of funding. And from a local funding perspective, senior centers at six hundred, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars roughly is about twenty-one percent of the local expenditure, local fund expenditures that we'll make in two thousand and eighteen for aging services.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Uh, I, I think that's, uh, helpful, and, but much of our direct activity by the county is, is geared at providing, um, uh, services for folks to make, help people stay in their homes.
Absolutely.
And not go to nursing homes and that sort of thing.
That, that's correct. That's the primary focus of the Division on Aging, is to allow individuals to age in place, and we do that through a number of different programs and opportunities. We certainly do appreciate all of the partnership that we have with all of the seniors service, senior centers that we fund. There are seventeen different senior centers that we fund, the four that were represented here today, and, um, all the others do a tremendous job for the residents of our community that fit that category.
Well, we'll all, we'll all agree with that. They've all, I think, exceeded their requirements for their current level and have met the requirements for the next level, and that's why they're here today, so. Um, I have a comment from Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at the, uh, the budget book on page five fifty-four, which I think outlines the three things you just mentioned a minute ago. Community services, senior centers, and, and community service grants. And I'm noticing in the eighteen budget, though, I'm seeing reductions of seven point two percent, nega-, uh, a reduction of, uh, two point two-five percent for senior centers, and a reduction of four point two-four percent for community service grants. Can you explain why those are going down?
I'm going to make an attempt. Um, I believe that the majority of that reduction is tied to the move for the Division on Aging from their current location to the Ronald Reagan Building in two thousand and eighteen. So there've been adjustments made in the budget because that's an expenditure that will go away for the Division on Aging when they move into that program.
So just me, let me clarify. So the, the, the move from one facility to the other is going to cost some money, and that's being taken out of this budget?
That is correct. Yes.
I guess I'd like to, to know, know more about that from the manager. I'll talk to him about that at some other time, I guess, but, um, just, just in the senior center funding alone, which we heard a lot of people talking about that tonight, but just that one fund alone, uh, between the seventeen revised and the eighteen recommended budget is a reduction of almost fifteen thousand dollars.
That's correct.
They're asking for seventy-three thousand dollars, and so I don't know, how's that, how's that fifteen thousand dollars going to be absorbed in terms of reduction of funding to, to which senior, senior center? How's that going to be absorbed?
All right, Commissioner Lindsay Proussot, the CFO. Uh, just to clarify, in the budget, we do have a reduction across the Aging Tax Fund and Aging Grants related to the move from leased space into that new Ronald Reagan Building. And so when that occurs, there will actually be overall savings to the Aging Budget because they're moving into county-owned space. And so it's not necessarily that the costs would go up related to the move, it's that there are savings that we expect to see in those leases. And you are right that that, um, Senior Center budget was reduced kind of across the board, uh, but the overall, the funding is within that, um, Aging Mill Levy Fund, and so we will simply shift budget authority when we have a better idea of where those lease savings actually will occur. We'll shift the budget from there to the senior center, senior center, uh, cost center to make up that difference.
Can you, can you summarize what are those costs associated with the, the move? I mean, is there a way we maybe consider funding that in a different way, perhaps?
Well, so the savings for the move actually are already included in the CIP project itself. And so you might recall that at the end of last year, you all approved about one point nine million dollars, uh, for the CIP to move into floors four through six of Ronald Reagan, and so that's where we would expect those costs to come from related to the move. Um, in the two thousand and eighteen budget, there's an overall reduction because of those lease costs that we don't anticipate to pay anymore because they'll be in that county-owned facility.
So there's enough funding with the recommended budget to fund the senior centers themselves to the same level we did last year?
Yes, sir.
So it's not a reduction to any senior center?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, that helps. Um, is it safe, since you're at the podium, is it safe to, could I, could I, could I generate or could I calculate a Mill Levy equivalent to, to these funds and, and see what that would be? Because the assessed valuation did go up a little bit, so if you just simply follow the same Mill Levy equivalent, there would be some small increase at least.
Right.
Um, or maybe I could look at this in terms of a CPI growth, you know, for the community. What's the cost? Because again, Mr. Burgess made a couple of points, that inflation has continued to go up, so I think money doesn't go as far as it used to. Um, the number of seniors they have goes up. And by the way, relevant to my question, oh, I would like to read one paragraph. This came from, uh, a WSU study, which I think was very interesting. Um, this is along the question that I asked earlier, but I think maybe I didn't ask it correctly. Uh, WSU Center for Economic Development and Business Research Projects, uh, said in two thousand and twelve, March of two thousand and twelve, did a study, and they, they commented that there was going to be an eighty, according to them, an eighty-eight point two percent increase in the, uh, in the population of sixty-two and above between the eight, between the years of two thousand and ten and two thousand and thirty. So eighty-eight to point two percent increase in the aging, in the, that, that population of sixty-two and older. Um, so again, so the population's going up, they're trying to keep people in their homes, keep them active, uh, keep them independent, and, uh, the number of people are trying to provide services to is clearly going up. I don't think anybody's going to argue that it's not. I think that's clear. The costs are clearly going up, something's out of here. I mean, so if you just connected this to a Mill Levy equivalent, that would certainly be an increase. The CPI would be increased, but I'm just curious, if you look at these numbers over time, it appears to me that they've, they've not had, again, I think one of the people testified, they haven't had an increase in a very, very long time. So I'm just curious, uh, are we viewing the, the aging, uh, sector of our budget as a zero-sum game, and, and so if other costs go up, then these costs have to come down? Or how, why is it we can't? I'm just curious why we can't seem to find the seventy-three thousand dollars within that budget or, or advocate for revenue outside that budget? I mean, this is property tax funds, is that correct?
Right.
I'm, I'm having trouble with that. Can you please just tell me what you, tell me what you can? I sure appreciate your perspective on it.
Well, certainly, uh, we have a property tax target. We know of overall, we want twenty-nine point three-five-nine mills. And so it's not necessarily a zero-sum game within the Aging Mill Levy Fund. And so it's not necessarily a zero-sum game within the Aging Mill Levy Fund. It's across all of our eight property tax-supported funds that we need to come up with a mill levy rate that would equal that amount. With regard to the $73,000, certainly that's just a priority issue and a policy issue for the Commission to choose within the recommended budget what they would like to fund or what changes they would like to make. And so that would be something simply as, staff, we've made a recommendation to you through the county manager's recommended budget. Any changes you want to make from there, we can incorporate. For the Aging Mill Levy, we are capped at that 1.0 mill, but other than that, that's the only real parameter that's set there, if that answers your question.
Okay, so let me ask it this way. If you simply use the same mill levy for these various budgets, would there not be some kind of a small increase this year? There would have to be, would there not?
It would be, just because of the assessed value. We know that that levy alone, the 29.359 mills, would generate slightly less than 3.3% in terms of increase in revenue.
Okay. Well, that helps. All right. You've given me a lot to think about. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see anyone else asking to speak, so Tim, thank you for your comments. Once again, I'll ask if there's anyone else who wants to speak at the public hearing? I see no Commissioner wants to speak, no one rising to speak, so at this point, I will close the public hearing and ask Commissioners if we could have a motion to receive and file. So moved?
Second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye, thank you. There's nothing else to come before this regular part of the county budget hearing, so this time I will adjourn the special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners setting in regular meeting and a call to order the special meeting of the Fire District and the, as a special meeting of the governing body of Fire District One, Monday, July 31st. And Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Ransah?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Chairman Enrew?
Present.
And first item, please.
New business. Item A, Public Hearing Regarding the 2018 Fire District One Budget.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager. This evening is the final public hearing on the 2018 Fire District One budget. It totals $17,957,696. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $16,458,571, which require a mill levy of approximately 18.414 mills, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. I recommend you open the public hearing, receive comments, and close the public hearing once it is over.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the manager? Seeing none, at this point, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the public who wants to make a comment on the Fire District budget. Anyone wishing to speak? No one's rising to speak. Commissioners, any comments? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing for Fire District Number One, and then once again, ask if there's any comment. Seeing none, public hearing's closed, and I guess we don't need a motion to receive and file since no one said anything. That being the case, last chance. All right, Commissioners, the Fire District Number One meeting is adjourned. And thank you all for being here.